Good afternoon and welcome to Senate Committee on Energy, Economic Development, and Tourism, Joint Hearing with the Committee on Government Operations, 1:01 PM Decision-Making Agenda. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. The measure we're making decisions on is Senate Bill 2765. After careful consideration and conferring with those, my recommendation is to defer this measure indefinitely. Thank you. With that, meeting adjourned.
And we concur.
Aloha and welcome to Senate Committee on Energy, Economic Development, and Tourism, 1:01 Agenda. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 1:00 PM on Thursday, February 8, 2024, in this room, 229, and a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. Please note, we have a two-minute limit per testifier. First up, Senate Bill 3048. Mr. Tokyo, Director Tokyo, come. Deputy. In support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Deputy Director Dan Wicker, D-Bet. We stand on our testimony in strong support and available for questions.
Thank you. Next up, Randy Leong, testifying for DCCA.
Good afternoon, Chair Decoit and Vice Chair Wakai. My name is Randy Leong, Cable Television Administrator for the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. The department is in full support of this bill and would like to note that we defer to D-Bet and the Hawaii Broadband Office on specific provisions of this bill. Mahalo and we'll be here for any questions.
Thank you. Next up, State Council on Developmental Disabilities, Dentry, in support. Not here. Next up, Kapole Chamber of Commerce, in support. In person, not here. Next up, Hoi Broadband Hui Daniel Smith, on Zoom.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair Decoit and Vice Chair Wakai and the members of the committee. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Hawaii Broadband Hui. We strongly support this bill and believe that its implementation will assist D-Bet in formulating the procedures for closing the digital equity gap in Hawaii. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Janice Ikera, in support. Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii, in support. We have also late, Janitsuki, Hoi Telkom, in support. And IT reuse Hawaii, in support, as well as late testimony from two, six individuals. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify on the measure? Seeing none, any questions? Okay, I got one for D-Bet or broadband. D-Bet slash broadband. Thanks, Dean. So, since the bill has no funding, do you guys have a timeline for setting up the grant program?
I defer that to Chung Chang, Hoi Broadband Department of the Office.
Chair, Chung Chang, City Broadband Coordinator for D-Bet. Yeah, so we are planning to set this up by the time we get the federal funds. So the timing of it will be late third quarter, fourth quarter this year.
What month is it?
If I had to get, October, November-ish.
And then, how much funding you guys talking about?
We're anticipating, so right now, the Notice of Funding Opportunity hasn't come out yet. We're anticipating that in April of this year. We're anticipating anywhere from thirteen to fifteen million dollars.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, next, thank you. Relating to Stadium Authority, I'll take Brian Andrews, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chair Decoit, Vice Chair Wakai, and members of the committee. My name's Ryan Andrews. I'm representing the Stadium Authority to voice our strong support for this bill. It's essentially a housekeeping measure that proposes amendments to the Stadium Authority statute aimed at clarifying the requirement to establish a quorum for conducting business and validating acts of the Stadium Authority. The Stadium Authority comprises of eleven members, nine of whom are voting members and two who are ex officio, non-voting members. However, the current Stadium Authority statute lacks specificity regarding the inclusion of non-voting members in establishing a quorum. So the passage of this bill will bring clarity by stipulating that a majority of the currently appointed voting members is necessary to conduct business and that a concurrence of a majority of these voting members is required to take official action. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next up, D-Bet Director Dan Wicker.
If you guys can support, I don't have questions.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Stadium Authority, just got one question for you. Since the bill addresses quorum requirements, has the authority had problems with quorum?
The authority has had problems in the last few months with quorum because, again, the language is not clear and we have had a new deputy attorney general who wanted it clarified.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Senate Bill 3265 relating to film industry development. First up, D-Bet.
Hello, Chair, members of the committee, Georgia Skinner, Creative Industries Division, D-Bet. We stand in strong support of this measure, particularly the components that really help accelerate and move our industry forward. We appreciate the introduction of the measure. We know that there've been some comments by our deputy attorney general in relation to the creative, the sector regarding native Hawaiian cultural content, et cetera. Just want to pledge to work with the committee and anyone else to see how we can benefit from this. If it doesn't work in this language, perhaps there's another way to introduce this, to support, financial support for our local industry.
Thank you. Next up, Department of Taxation, wait, comments?
Good afternoon, Director, excuse me, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee, Teresa Zetwick on behalf of the Department of Taxation. We stand on our written testimony, offering comments. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Next up, on Zoom, Attorney General, Sayeed.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Deputy Attorney General Elise Sami-Mia, appearing on behalf of the Department of the Attorney General. We have constitutional concerns with this bill. First, the provision that exempts native Hawaiian content from the project cap of seven million could be subject to challenge as violating the First Amendment. You know, this is because the government may not regulate speech based on substantive content, nor can it favor one speaker over another. Additionally, we have concerns with the provisions that allow for native Hawaiian staffing and for a subcommittee of native Hawaiian members. Those provisions could be subject to challenge for violating the equal protection clauses of the Hawaii State Constitution and of the United States Constitution. That's because the government may not treat one race differently than another. So we do have some serious constitutional concerns regarding these provisions and we are recommending that they be deleted. I'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, University of Hawaii, Christopher Lee.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Here on behalf of the University of Hawaii, we stand on our testimony in support and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next up, Valea Constantino, Film Commissioner from City Council of Honolulu.
Hello, Chair, members of the committee, Valea Constantino, Film Commissioner with the Honolulu Film Office. Stand on my written testimony in support and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you. Also testifying in support, Alani Freitas. Next up, SAG-AFTRA, in support, in person.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair, and members of the committee. Thank you so much for putting this bill forward and we testify in strong support of it. I've also brought our National Board Member here to help, if you have any questions of me or him, with regards to the actors in Hawaii here and our strong support for this bill. I am also available for questioning when it comes to, if you wanted to chat a little bit more about the First Amendment and constitutional implications of this bill. One of my side gigs, now taking off my SAG-AFTRA hat, is I also teach as an adjunct in both the HPU system and the UH system, and I do teach First Amendment law and ethics and communications and communications law. And we can, you know, if we wanted to open that dialogue, I'd be happy to talk with you and the AG's office about other states that have indeed done this kind of thing, maybe not necessarily favoring so much one group over another, but there are Supreme Court cases that do speak to government acting as a patron rather than as a sovereign when it comes to these types of issues. So I welcome the opportunity to discuss further and do whatever we can to support our industry, local hires in the Hawaiian community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Tui Scanlin for IATSC 665.
Hello, Akako, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Tuiana Scanlin, President, IATSC Local 665 and International Trustee. We stand on our written testimony in support and are available for questions.
Thank you. Next up, Ohina Labs, in support. Hoi Media, in support. SAG-AFTRA, in support. Lee Henry, Randy Pereira, in support. Okeanawa, in support. I have a lot of people in support. Tom Yamachika, testifying for Tax Foundation of Hawaii, on Zoom.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. This is Jade McMillan on behalf of Tom Yamachika for the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We have submitted some comments on this measure and will stand on our written comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Shereen Balis, in support, on Zoom.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Again, we have a lot of people in support. Is there anybody in the room wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, Irish.
Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members, Irish Barber with IATSC. Thank you so much for this measure. DEI, Diversity Equity Inclusion, super important to the IATSC and we do have a way to quantify the 51% if it does go forward. We have a script supervisor that breaks down every script by page and minutes. So if we're once able to identify native Hawaiian content, we do have someone that works, that can break it down for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to testify?
Hello, I'm Becky Sticetti. I'm the Executive Director for the Hawaii International Film Festival. We are in support of this bill and we also do believe that the DEI component is incredibly important to sustain work and the workforce that is present in Hawaii. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, members, any questions?
Georgia and Chris. So, Georgia, if I can read this correctly, the production cap is going to be lifted to seventeen million, isn't it? It's fifteen million?
No, that's the, excuse me, sixty million. So the fifty million, five zero, cap is in existence now. We consistently see that our credits coming in are in the sixty-five to seventy-five million range, so those roll forward. That's why the sixty million was recommended. The seventeen million is the per-project cap, so you cannot, as an entity by yourself, or your production entity cannot claim more than seventeen million.
But isn't the current per-production cap fifteen?
No, it's seventeen.
Seventeen million dollars?
Yeah, Act 217, SLH 22.
Okay. Considering we have sixty million dollars to play with to help generate all the economic development from film and to have one entity take seventeen million dollars out of there, shouldn't we be kind of going down the route of having spread the wealth around to as many as possible rather than having two, three network films going to take everything and all the goodness that we want to do with native Hawaiian stories and whatever is going to be left on the side of the road?
Well, I really appreciate the question because it helps me to clarify how we have achieved culling the credit and allocations for, first, the smaller productions. We prioritize them because, as a state policy position, it's important for us to grow our own local industry, not just in crew base, which is critically important, but also in our narrative content development. So, any production that comes in from a hundred thousand up to, they're going to be claiming under five hundred thousand, they're prioritized. Normally, that comes right off the top. The next level is the two point five million. Anything over that that you're going to claim, you have to mandatory split, which means you cannot claim seventeen million if you're a large production all in one year. That would really devastate the credit and really go against, I think, what the legislature and the administration was trying to achieve initially. So, in the, and I'm happy to provide the committee with this breakdown so that it's easy for you to see, but in that manner, we are required by law and the rules to be able to split those. It's critical to being fair allocation.
Okay, just want to make sure that everyone gets a piece of the pie there.
Yeah, very important.
I want to ask you, Chris, the part about the studio and film facilities part, and was it yesterday or the day before, we read about, congratulations, Chris, on getting someone to build out the film studio in UH West Oahu?
Well, it's a first step. We've been in a public ISP process, started, I believe, around June. Submissions were due in October. The committee has been considering the various submissions and we are at the point now where we now have exclusive negotiation with one entity, which happens to be a local Hui.
Okay. So the language in this bill, it focuses on the film studios and applications and whatnot, is that going to be helpful to your cause or is it, you're too far down the road, so this is really not going to be helpful to you?
No, 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 it's very necessary. This is not, this is not an easy lift. The studio that we're anticipating is going to start at at least a hundred million dollar investment, private investment. And because it's a lease situation, that makes it even more difficult to find funding for projects. So the G E.T. exemption on the construction process is something that I'm sure the developers would most welcome. The university doesn't benefit from it itself, but I think it's going to be a very important part in the consideration of how they get this project financed.
I mean, I'm a big fan of film, but once we start carving out, like, this project doesn't have to pay G E.T., this project, I mean, I can argue that the stadium shouldn't be paying G E.T. as well because of the public benefit. So, that's the only thing I find is just a little slippery slope. If we start doing it for this industry, that, you know, tourism and what, a hotel's going to say, I shouldn't pay G E.T.?
My understanding is we're not the first to look into this. Military housing, I believe, has been exempted from G E.T. taxes for construction. And, you know, it is a consideration, obviously, what kind of tax policy you folks want to pursue, but I do think that this is something that is appreciated. I will also tell you that earlier today, we were down at City Hall for the, I forget which reading it was, Bill 59, and this is something that they're following very, very closely. There is actually in the current bill a requirement that the state include this in order for them to do their property tax exemption. So, you know, I think this is something that has been used successfully in the past to encourage the kind of development that we want to see in the islands. And, you know, again, it's not, it's going to be a very heavy lift getting this done, but it is something that has the potential to expand the business from the four hundred million dollars a year in direct spend that it does to a billion dollars a year.
Thank you, Senator Fukunaga.
I guess in terms of where, you know, the Honolulu City Council has weighed in on this issue, I think the requirement for a G E.T. exemption was first proposed by the Honolulu City Council.
Yes.
That the city council did not want to consider real property tax exemptions unless the state was also going to join in some form or fashion. So I think it reflects, you know, a level of partnership between the state and the county looking for ways to contribute towards making the development viable. Is that kind of a fair statement of whatever you may have testified to today?
Yes. Yes, I think we're at this inflection point where this, at least, this body is considering and the governor has in his package something very similar to your, to your package of incentives. The city, for the first time, doesn't have a lot of tools in their chest to attract economic development that spurs economic growth and living wage jobs. So, and the university, at the same time, has been moving forward to develop this land with a private developer, with private funds, to get us to a point where we have the physical infrastructure so that we're not missing out on half the business, which is what's happening right now since we don't have the stage space.
Thank you.
A couple of things. Yeah, because Councilman Kelvin Say said, if the state don't have any skin in the game, we're not going to put nothing in there, too. My thing is, you talked about the military housing and development on the G E.T. tax. Those are mostly federal funds coming in to subsidize a lot of the housing, so it's kind of different from this. I understand we want to get the studio built and all that, but we don't want them to take the chicken, the eggs, and the hen house, not the hen house, the chicken house, all in the same time. You see what I mean? Because we giving the land, we giving a good deal on the land and everything like that, but what we like, I know this is not even on this bill, but what is the main component of how it's going to really, besides you talking about money, because I could talk about money all day, you know, but actual boots on the ground, actual local people, local job for local people in the industry. Because I don't like here later on saying that, oh, let there be somebody bill because we never have enough labor and then it goes out to somebody else. So those are the parameters. I know it was, I don't see the RSP going out, but those are the parameters that I gave to the university to put in because we don't want this to go to anybody that's never put any shovel to the ground when it came to anything with our industry going forward. So I just hope that you guys take that under consideration, too. Okay, Chair?
Thank you.
I'm ready for hold. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Just to follow up on Senator Wakai's question, on the smaller productions. So you said it's based on dollar amount?
Yes, so how you cull the fifty million each year, we prioritize by smaller productions that have come in for the credit. In order to get in for the credit, you have to have a base level of a hundred thousand of your budget, and then your credit is going to be either twenty-two or twenty-seven percent of that amount.
Okay, so it's on a dollar amount?
Yeah.
But you can't do it on whether they're local or they're mainland?
No. No, but what I'm saying is that the majority of those that do not claim more than five hundred thousand in a credit are locally generated productions, whether they're a mid-range production, a small commercial.
I get it.
Yeah.
But you cannot distinguish, like the Attorney General was.
Yeah.
So it doesn't necessarily mean just because it's a smaller amount that it goes to the local production.
Correct, but the vast majority, and we can get you metrics on exactly what those are because we do know.
Just want to clarify so you understand that. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you can. Thank you. Next up, Senate Bill 3360 relating to renewable fuel. First up, Department of Taxation.
Good afternoon again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. We stand on our written testimony and comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Department of Attorney General.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Winston Wall, Deputy Attorney General. We submitted written testimony and we have concerns, constitutional concerns, largely about the locally grown language in the bill. As written, we feel that the bill would be subject to challenge right now on constitutional grounds, particularly in regards to a 1984 Supreme Court case of Bakas imports. In that court case, the United States Supreme Court struck down a favorable tax exemption from the Hoi liquor tax related to locally grown food and wine and Okolehaau specifically. So because of that, we feel that this bill could also be subject to the same challenges and concerns. Available for questioning afterwards.
Thank you. Next up, Hoi State Energy Office, wait, comments?
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee, Monique Schaefer on behalf of Mark Gluck. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Robert King, Bio Diesel Technologies, support in person.
James Forrest, I'm General Counsel for Pacific Bio Diesel.
Don't tell you, you don't look like a boss.
Thank he wishes he looked like him. He's a handsome man. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. I am James Forrest. I'm General Counsel for Pacific Bio Diesel. We create second-generation biofuels. That's a locally-produced firm energy source, and we're here in support of the bill today. We do believe that the increased incentives in the bill demand increased benefits to the state. So we are supporting the two-tiered system. It creates an additional benefit for the locally-produced feedstock and also for whenever you reach seventy-five reduction in the greenhouse gas emissions. And the locally-produced feedstock is very important to this bill. That is part of the, part of the bill, it was specifically mentioned by Senate President Koche because it relates to local farming and production of local products, specifically the local fuel, the local feed crops feeds the animals. It also provides, we make cooking oil out of this. So we are aware of the Attorney General's, I guess, concern about the clause. We do believe that that challenge could be overcome. There's really good analysis in the Pono Pacific testimony regarding that legal situation. If you can take a look at that. I do think the case also difference because that was a liquor case, we're talking about renewable fuel, the problems associated with, that we're trying to solve, our energy independence, you know, food security, energy security. We're also amending our soils, soil health, local production of, you know, agriculture. So I do think there is a difference that needs to be analyzed. And that local food production is also very important to us. And you'll see that a lot of the objections to this bill relate to SAF. The bill is not a SAF bill. There is another bill that's in the Senate, that's SB 2574. That's more of a SAF bill.
James, thank you for your time. We have your testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next up, Mark Inoy, testifying on behalf of PAR.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of committee. My name is Mark Inoy from PAR Hawaii. Appreciate this opportunity to provide our support and offer amendments on SB 3360. As you know, Hawaii's landscape is changing, our energy landscape is changing, and as a state, we're making, you know, considerable progress in adopting more renewable energy, but it's not, it's not an easy path. One of the exciting, you know, areas of Hawaii is the production of renewable fuels right here in the islands. PAR Hawaii has already invested ninety million in our Kapole refinery to start that production of renewable fuels by 2025. We have partners with Hawaiian Airlines, Pono Pacific, and other broad range of stakeholders, and we're committed to pursuing this production of locally grown oil seed crops for an alternative to bringing in fossil fuel oils. By summertime next year, the Kapole refinery slash bio-refinery will be able to produce sixty million gallons of renewable fuels for the state. Some of those critical fuels will be sustainable aviation fuel, SAF, and also renewable diesel. They'll both help with our clean energy goals, decarbonization goals for the future. With respect to this measure, we should, it should be augmented with the inclusion of the SAF incentive because if you look at it, many of the fuel demands in Hawaii are coming mainly from aviation fuel, and we don't want that. And we don't want that to be overlooked. SAF has, SAF has a higher cost of production other than other renewable fuels such as renewable diesel, renewable NAPDA. So that's why we strongly feel recommend, recommend an additional incentive of $1 per gallon to bridge that production gap for SAF. This would be significant and meaningful to reach our state's decarb and clean energy goals. We, we again thank you for this opportunity to testify, supportive of S B 3360. I'll be here for additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Alana James testifying on behalf of Hawaii Airlines.
Hi, good afternoon Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai, and members of the committee. My name is Alana James, I'm the Managing Director of Sustainability Initiatives at Hawaiian Airlines. We will stand on our written testimony providing comments, but I just wanted to highlight that while we support the intent of Senate Bill 3360, our suggested amendments seek to provide incremental value for sustainable aviation fuel or SAF compared to renewable diesel in order to close the relative margin gap between the two. Without this, producers will not have incentive to produce SAF, which runs the risk of aviation emissions not being addressed with this tax credit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Julie Riff Hawaii Clean Power Task Force in opposition.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Julie Riff and I'm here testifying on behalf of Hawaii Clean Power Task Force in opposition of S B 3360 today. While the notion of promoting locally generated renewable fuel appears promising at first glance, our apprehension lies in the definition of renewable feedstocks, which incorporates both biomass and municipal solid waste. It doesn't matter whether it's biofuels or waste-based fuels, burnable fuels are not clean, they are not sustainable, and they are not long-term options. There's an array of experimental incinerator, incinerator-like technologies that aim to convert these wastes into fuels, and these processes fall under EPA regulations as municipal waste combusters or waste incinerators. Additionally, when these fuels are burned off-site in vehicles or for air travel, they are not subject to the pollution controls that are applicable for, say, centralized facilities. The only mature technology for aviation biofuels is hydro treating of vegetable oil and animal fats, and this aviation fuel has the potential to create a new market for vegetable oils. Our concern here is that the legislation might unintentionally shift Hawaii's agricultural focus from local food production to renewable fuel production conflicting with the state's commitment to doubling local food production by 2030 via the Aloha Plus Challenge. Additionally, specific biomass resources in Hawaii and other tropical regions are understudied, lacking the essential information on their performance and behavior undergoing these conversion processes relevant to alternative jet fuel production. So these burnable fuels labeled as transition options, post-economic and infrastructural challenges hindering a shift to cleaner alternatives. And so the Clean Power Task Force urges reevaluation of the proposed 80 million for subsidizing these renewable fuels and suggests redirecting funds to more efficiently invest in cleaner alternative energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Tommy Amachika Tax Foundation of Hawaii on Zoom.
Yes, good afternoon Chair, members of the committee. Dave McMillan for Tommy Amachika Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We've submitted our comments on the measure and we'll stand on our rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up Chris Bennett for Pono Pacific on Zoom. Are you unmute?
Hello Chair Decoy, Vice Chair Wakai, members of the committee. My name is actually Ramsey Brown. I'm here to testify on behalf of Pono Pacific Land Management. I am the President of Diversified Agriculture. Since 2000, Pono Pacific has worked with landowners in activating working lands and creating sustainable food systems. Given our experience, we have cultivated a partnership with PAR Hawaii and Hawaiian Airlines, and we envision an economy where local agriculture, local production of renewable fuel, and local fuel consumption can come together. Pono Pacific is actually actively engaged in crop trials on Oahu with plans to expand to neighbor islands and spur the production of locally grown feedstocks. We believe that the proposed legislation presents a win-win opportunity for our state, our environment, and my sector, our local agricultural sector. By supporting our farmers fostering clean energy, innovation, and building a more sustainable aviation industry, we believe we can secure a brighter future for generations to come. We stand on our testimony in support of Senate Bill 3360, and I'm happy to answer questions the committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Energy Justice Network, Mike Yvonne in opposition on Zoom.
Hello Chair and Committee members. I'm Mike Yvonne with Energy Justice Network and here in support of our work with local groups Kakuwanaaina and the Hawaii Clean Power Task Force, standing in opposition to Senate Bill 3360. We're concerned about the costs of this being that there are expensive types of fuels that we're talking about, yet they're not clean and justifying that increased costs by being something that would be advantageous enough to public health and to the environment that's worth spending that sort of money. We are concerned about the fact that we have biotech industry organizations in favor of this and what that might mean for starting to grow genetically modified crops or trees on the island. And the whole issue of food versus fuel, when the islands don't bring in enough, well don't produce enough food without having to import it to have, land have to be taken up and deplete soils, deplete water, to grow things, to burn them, when there are better solutions out there. There are sectors that still need to be cleaned up, particularly the electricity sector, which the state renewable portfolio standard aims to clean up by 2045. And that could be sped up quite a bit. There's a need to ultimately electrify the transportation sector, the electricity sector being cleaner, and also electrify the heating sector as well. And rather than wait 22 years to complete that process, this $80 million of subsidies per year could go to these other sectors and have a lot more accomplished for less money in less time than it will take to try to clean up a system of burning from one dirty, going from one dirty fuel, switching to a differently dirty fuel. So I encourage this be redrafted as a study bill to look at the types of alternatives like conservation and efficiency in each of the energy sectors and basically using wind, solar, and storage for the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Stanley Osterman for Tiger Shark L C in support, Brian Minmore, Hawaii Farmer in support, Sean Williams testifying for Airlines for America with comments, and testifying for Hawaii Trade Organization, Carl Campana with comments. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, questions on the committee?
Yeah, so I guess the A G.
A G please.
So we've heard from testimony saying that, you know, there's ways around, there's ways around this legality on local, local grown and so forth. And yeah, obviously, you can fight it in court. What does it cost us and how long does it take when, when some kind of a challenge is brought forth like this?
Well, the last instance that we had was in 1984 with that Bakas case, and it went all the way to the Supreme Court. So you're looking at litigation probably brought by an out-of-state producer of renewable source fuel that's not beginning the same tax credit. They would bring that appeal in the tax appeal court here. I don't know, the, the amount at stake could be contingent upon the amount of the credit that they're claiming. So the costs are tough to estimate, but it would be a significant amount of resources, especially because if they were to bring that type of case, it would be one that would probably be appealed from there to the I C A or the Supreme Court, and then from there also to the Supreme Court. So because it deals with a constitutional issue or a United States constitutional issue, it could be pretty significant litigation.
So whether we win or lose, it costs the state time and money, a lot of time and more than this credit possibly?
Correct, correct. It would cost the state certainly time. I'm not sure about money at this point because the credit would be, would be denied. It's not like the state would be expending the credit and then would have to go to court or fight it in the courts to recover it. So the, the cost of recovering it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be like a normal credit where the, the state issues a refund and then has to issue an assessment afterwards.
Would you hire outside counsel that was knowledgeable, more knowledgeable than what we might have at the A G?
I feel like the state, the state Solicitor General is competent at this point to the, if they were to go to appeal, they'd be competent there. And the Tax and Charities Division has a lot of experience specifically with Commerce Clause issues. So it's, it's one that gets brought up every legislature, we're, we're well briefed on it.
Well, you know, I know every, every legislation we pass is subject to a lawsuit, but when we have case law and certain things, I mean, it would be crazy for us to ignore all of that because we could be tied up in the courts. You know, it's easy for private attorneys to say, yeah, well, we can work around it, but with the lawsuit, then we're stuck, right? We're, we don't know how long it's going to take.
Certainly Senator.
For us to be involved. Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. And I guess I had a general question for those that were in opposition, they kept saying alternatives. So possibly the airlines can tell us what are the alternatives other than this and regular fuel that would be affordable? Cleaner alternatives and better solutions, those are very stubborn.
So, thank you. The aviation industry is really focused on aviation sector-specific initiatives to decarbonize. That includes things like fleet modernization, sustainable aviation fuel, and operational efficiencies. So airlines are already investing billions of dollars in fleet renewal to transition to more efficient airplanes, but really sustainable aviation fuel. Really sustainable aviation fuel is the most promising technology to help decarbonize aviation. Sustainable aviation fuel has a 50 to 80% lower life cycle emissions compared to conventional jet fuel when measured on a life cycle basis. So it can make really meaningful reductions in aviation emissions.
So you're saying that this, this measure could make the reductions, but are there other current alternatives out there that's?
So there are some emerging propulsion technologies like battery electric power or hydrogen power, but those technologies are really only expected to be viable on short haul routes and on smaller vehicles. So here in Hawaii, about 90% of our aviation emissions are associated with our long haul routes, and it's only about 10% on our inner island. Also, our inner island operation is actually really high traffic volume, so we fly 150 flights a day with 128-seat airplanes. And so that type of operation just can't be replaced with significantly smaller vehicles. So those technologies are exciting over the long term, but they will take a long time to develop.
Right, and in the meantime, what are we doing?
In the meantime, sustainable aviation fuel is the most promising technology to really help us address aviation carbon emissions.
Thank you for that.
So just as a follow-up, so you guys looking at doing the production here and as well abroad from the mainland? Where would, where would the processing take place? Is it to one particular processing or are you guys open to other processing areas?
So for the sustainable aviation fuel, so we're open.
The growing of the fuel itself?
So the fuel, I mean, sustainable aviation fuel can be used from, be made from a variety of different feedstocks. So feedstock could be imported into Hawaii to produce sustainable aviation fuel, or we could grow crop-based feedstock here in the islands to be a source of feedstock for sustainable aviation fuel.
So the amount that you guys are going to need to grow, how much would you say would be grown in Hawaii versus grown into, in the mainland, providing those jobs?
So I think I would have to defer to Ramsey from Pono Pacific on the volumes of the potential for crop-based feedstock here.
Don't know what help we, we could find that out. Ramsey is, is he on Zoom?
He was on Zoom.
He is on Zoom Chair.
Can you let him in?
Aloha Chair, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, oh sorry, you can't see, there we go. Yeah, I would have to get back to you. I think Mark Inouye is also in the room. He may have a more accurate number there, but we are in current crop trials right now, and we're seeing what kind of a crop would be viable that would work for SAF and also fit well as a rotational crop within our food system so that we could grow food and this biofuel alternate, in an alternating fashion.
So Ramsey, real quick, what, what is the turnover rate on growing this in Hawaii? If you're using them as a bumper crop in relation to the food that you're growing?
This is a 100-day crop that we're growing, it's about three months, and our vegetable crops are anywhere from 30 days to 90 days, and then we'll let the rest, the field rest. So we'll basically do, let's say, 90 days carrots, and then we'll do 100 days of this cover crop that could be used as sustainable aviation fuel, and then back into carrots and our root vegetables.
What is the rate per acre on the biofuel? How, how much production would you do on an acre for a biofuel?
The yield?
Yes.
I'll have to look up that number Chair and get back to you on that. I'll make a note of it here.
Okay, if you can please, thank you.
Yep.
Any other question, Senator Wakai?
The gentleman from PAR. I like biofuels and renewables, but this bill has some big numbers in it. I mean, you're going from a $20 million tax credit to an $80 million tax credit. Right now, the cap is at 3.5 million. Do you already, does PAR already take $3.5 million in tax credits?
Not for this bill, no. We, not because we don't do any renewable fuels right now. We're getting ready to do renewable fuels for next year, and we can start producing, but not at this moment.
Okay, and then I see, it seems like a very convoluted kind of a way to avail yourself to the tax credit. 75% of the total tax credit, then there's a dollar added per gallon of renewable fuels. Let's say we, let's, we go with this $80 million, this will allow 75 million for one project. PAR could get 60 million out of the $80 million, correct?
I mean, possibly.
That's a lot of money for us to give to one corporation in, in Hawaii. And to Senator Decoy's question about, like, you don't even know what our local agriculture input would be to this, because part of me thinks like, I don't want part of this $80 million to go to Costa Rica or wherever is going to create the ethanol and whatever the biofuels is. So shouldn't we have a clear understanding of where is Hawaii's taxpayers' money is going? If it's going to help agriculture, well, that's an added benefit. But if it's going to go help some Southeast Asian country create an industry there, then I don't think that's a very wise use of state taxpayers' money.
Yeah, and that's not, not our intention, really is to, we're finding this out now. We're working with Pono Pacific, we're working with the, you know, private sector as well with Hawaiian Airlines, and, you know, going through this process is, is learning, right? It's, it's going to be, it's, this is what the trials is all about for us, is to find out all this, how much, you know, yield can we get for an acre, you know, through growing our biofuels out there through different locations? I mean, every location is going to be different.
And you mentioned that most of these credits would go for sustainable aviation fuel. Considering most of that is paid for by a tourist, isn't it smarter for us to allow the tourists to pay for that rather than all of us pay for that subsidy to you?
I wouldn't, I don't want to answer that question, but I think, you know, it's both sustainable aviation fuel and also renewable diesel. I think that's going to be where we can also fit in, and that's for utility, also for transportation, marine, heavy duty, heavy duty trucks as well. So it's, it's going to be a mix in that sense.
Yes, I understand that, that there are going to be multiple off-takers, but you mentioned in your testimony that the vast majority of this is going to go for sustainable aviation fuel, which is right now paid for mainly by tourists. So what we're doing here is shifting the, the push for sustainable and renewable energy off of tourists and putting it on locals to pay for that. Is that a wise decision?
I, I really wouldn't want to, I guess, comment on that one, but I mean, what you, what you're saying kind of makes sense.
It makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair.
So majority of them is for aviation fuel and then you said, yes. Sorry, I don't know your name this time, so anyway, so you said diesel, bio diesel, and aviation fuel. So how is this going to benefit as we're going towards renewable energy and having almost all the diesel equipment go to electric? How is this going to be viable when the bio diesel and all of that is starting to be less and less used? How is that going to help our taxpayers going forward?
Yeah, I, I believe that, you know, with bio diesel, right now I think they're in production with five, 5.5 million gallons. Yeah, I believe that, you know, with biodiesel, right now, I think they're in production, what, five, five-point-five million gallons per year? And that's, you know, I don't know what percentage that is of, you know, offtake to HECO and KIUC and others. But we're, you know, planning to expand that rate to sixty million, which, you know, give or take SAF and RD, renewable diesel. So it's going to help, I guess, in different ways. It has, it has to.
So I never catch what, Senator, like I said, but how much individual taxpayers will benefit? And how many more taxpayers could benefit from this increased eighty million available tax credit per calendar year?
I mean, that's open for Par, Pacific Biodiesel, or just spurring the innovation of other companies to get involved.
So just going for a chair, I don't know if you've been around, and I don't know if the energy guy is paying attention. But, you know, we've been advocating for hemp industry, hemp products, moving forward with hemp. And we're looking at all of this money that we're looking into. How much of that, I mean, besides what you guys are looking with the biodiesel and aviation fuel, that you guys can start come with agriculture coming in with the hemp products? Because you can harvest three times a year with, if you're using hemp for fuel, and maybe more depending on the climate. And Hawaii is a diverse area for that kind of growing. So did you guys even look into that?
The partners, Ponop Pacific, are, I believe, are evaluating different types of crops. You know, growing not just camelina, but looking at other crops as well here in Hawaii. And they would be the ones to evaluate that one with hemp.
Yeah, so you know how much money that we got, the state got, from Monsanto and their corn that they was growing in my community? Every single grain went to the continent, not in state here. They use their land, they get the tax breaks as farmers, all of this great stuff, but zero, I don't think zero, but I'm making them all numbers, zero benefits to the taxpayer. Because they take that corn and they sell it someplace else for fuel or feed, and we make nothing. We're giving them the land, we're giving them the water. Of course, we make a few dollars here and there on the taxes, but on the benefit of the crop, zero. So that's the kind of stuff that we're talking about here. So is there any way that you can, if you guys go do something viable, make sure the taxpayers here have a benefit thing for over seventy-five percent, that we can get something back? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, reasons for decision-making? We're ready for decision-making on our 1:01 PM agenda.
You guys keep the noise down?
Yep.
Can you talk outside?
Can you just keep the noise down, please? Okay, decision-making on our 1:01 PM agenda. First bill on the agenda is Senate Bill 3048 relating to the Hawaii Broadband and Digital Equity Office. Recommendation is to pass as an SD1, making technical amendments needed for consistency and clarity, and defecting the date to January 1st, 2060. Committee members, any discussion? Seeing none, Chair Wakai for the vote. Chair votes aye.
Vice Chair votes yes. Senator Fikinaga?
Aye.
Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next bill up, Senate Bill 3059 relating to stadium authority. Recommendation is to pass as an SD1. In subsection, subsection B on page seven, line two, adding the word "voting" before members to clarify that voting members of the board will be electing the board chair. On page seven, lines fifteen and eighteen, change currently appointed to currently serving members regarding the quorum requirements. Making technical amendments needed for consistency and clarity, defecting the date to January 1st, 2060. Committee members, any discussion? Seeing none, Chair votes aye. Chair Wakai for the vote.
Noting the presence of all members, any opposition or reservation to the Chair's recommendation? Having seen and heard none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next bill up, Senate Bill 3265 relating to the film industry development. I appreciate all the testimony submitted on this measure. My recommendation is to pass as an SD1 incorporating the AG's suggested amendments regarding the constitutionality regarding the native Hawaiian content provisions. So on, we will be deleting the exemption to the per-project cap for native Hawaiian content and staffing on page eight, lines twelve to sixteen, and the definition of native Hawaiian content on page nine, lines twelve to fifteen. Also deleting section 201-E on page three, lines eleven to fifteen, concerning the subcommittee of the Hawaii Film Advisory Council, which is both a membership and mandate that is subject to constitutional challenge. Also incorporating DOTAC suggested amendments on the dates making the, before section two effective January 1st, 2025, and section three applies to expenditures made after December 31st, 2024. I'd like to note in the committee report the testimony in support of the native Hawaiian content provisions at Advisory Board Subcommittee, and would like to explore options with Attorney General's office as to how to reach the goal for advising on cultural content within constitutional bounds to either incorporate into a Senate concurrent resolution or possible legislation. Committee members, any discussion?
Chair, can I ask Chris Lee? Chris Lee, is he, Chris Lee? Can you come up and ask, ask, ask one question?
Okay, just one.
Just one, one quick question. Do you think we need to have the New Zealand film industry on this Film Advisory Council?
Senator Favela, what I'm going to do is I'm going to move it down, and then we can have the next committee deal with the adding or deleting, if that's okay with you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Chair Wakai for the vote. Chair votes aye.
Noting the membership of everyone here on the committee, any opposition or reservation to the Chair's recommendation? We pass this measure with amendments. Having seen and heard none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Final bill on the agenda, Senate Bill 3360 relating to renewable fuel. My recommendation is to pass as an SD1, blanking out the sunset date, blanking out the tax credit amount, defecting the date to January 1st, 2060. Noting in the committee report, the next committee to consider how far to extend the sunset date and the feasible money amount for the tax credit. Committee members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair Wakai for the vote. Chair votes aye.
Noting the presence of all members, any opposition or reservation to the Chair's recommendation? We pass this measure with amendments. Having seen and heard none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you, and with that, we are adjourned. Mahalo for being here today. Aloha, and welcome to the-
Can you keep the door closed?
Aloha, and welcome to the Senate-
Excuse me.
Committee on Energy, Economic Development, Tourism, 2:00 PM hearing. We have one GM on this agenda. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the likely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding businesses at 1:00 PM on Thursday, February 8, 2024, in this room, 229, and a public notice that we posted on the legislature website. Please note, we have a one-minute per testifier. Sorry, you guys got a lot of testifiers. And you are able to stand on your testimony in support. Our GM nominee is GM 595 submitting for consideration and confirmation as a Director of Department of Business Economic Development and Tourism. Governor Nataro nominee, James Kunani Tokioka, for a term to expire 12/31/2026. First up, Governor Josh Green in support, in person. Guess he's not here, he's answering the phones. Next up, Mark Clip for State Energy Office, in support, in person. He's answering the other phones.
Well, actually, I'm here on Zoom.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to, I stand by my testimony and strong support of this. But I also just want to point out how wonderful it is that we actually have this confluence of someone with such longstanding public service and, you know, the business abilities and, and private sector experience that James Kunani Tokioka has. And I'm very excited to, to support him as DBED Director in this nomination. Encourage your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Dennis Ling, Department of Business Development and Support Division, in person, in support. Next, Department of Labor and Industrial Relations, Director Jade Butte.
Aloha and good afternoon, Chair Decoit, Vice Chair Wakai, and honorable members of the committee. Jade Butte, Director of the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations. On behalf of BLIR, and especially on my own behalf, strongly stand on a testimony in support. You know, I have the joy and privilege of working closely with Mr. Tokioka when he was in the legislature and during the response and recovery for the Maui wildfires. You know, we had many of our employees who were, had to stop the various disaster centers and resource centers to provide unemployment insurance and workforce assistance. And he skillfully managed, you know, their hotel accommodations. I have witnessed his dedication to serving those in need and look carefully upon his commitment and service to the people of Hawaii. I humbly request this committee to confirm him. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, David Sink, Foreign Trade, in support. Next up, Tian, Tian, Eugene Tian, Research and Economic Division, in support. Next, Louis Soliverio, Department of Budget and Finance, in support.
If I just may say a few words, I stand on our written, my written testimony and strong support of Jimmy for the position of the DBED Director. And as a former member of that very small club myself, I could, I can honestly tell you, it's been an amazing opportunity to be able to work with Jimmy as the DBED Director. I think he's done an exceptional job. And what he's been able to do over the last several months that he's been in the position, really, I couldn't imagine anybody else doing that well of a job that he did, but thank you.
Thank you. Are you, do you want me to speak on everybody's behalf right now? Because there's like a long list of people. Is everybody all in agreement with what Mr. Soliverio is saying?
Might not get to him.
Yeah. Okay, so next up, Chung Chang, in support on behalf of broadband. Thank you. Next up, Don Chang, in support, on behalf of BLIR. Thank you. Nadine Ando, Director of DCCA, also in support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm here, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I stand on my testimony and reading out the DCCA Director.
Thank you, Nadine. Wen Yamamorolau, Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority, also in support.
Yes, in support.
Thanks, Wen. Dean Hazama, Deputy Director, Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, also in support, in person, someplace. Hakim Oansafi, Public Housing Authority, also in support, and here in person.
Thank you. Aloha. We stand in strong support, but I just wanted to share a very small thing. When I called Jimmy, I thought he was still with Department of DOT about a matter has to do with HPA. By then, he was at DBED. Not only he just didn't direct me back there, but he went on and did the research and got back to the Housing Authority on something that has nothing to do with his department. That's the kind of, the quality of person that he is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Wendy Gady, on behalf of ADC.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. ADC stands, and I stand personally, in strong support of Director Tokioka. I have the privilege of seeing how he works in his community in Hawaii. The support, the respect, and the longtime journey of supporting agribusiness across the state is much appreciated. Strongly support.
Thank you. Next up, Dean Mino Kami, on behalf of Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation, in support. Sharon Heard, it's, wait, hang on, hang on, let me get Dean first. Hi, Dean.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members. Strong stand, strong support for Jimmy. Had the chance to work with Jimmy shortly after the fires. We worked together in the convention center, I was there for about a month. Jimmy was there much longer. I saw the leadership he provides, his character. The reason why the survivors got out of shelters into hotels was because of Jimmy's leadership. He set that path before FEMA got here, before Red Cross got here. So it really was his leadership that was the deciding factor. And as a leader of DBED, he's just been outstanding. Encouraged collaboration among the departments, among the agencies, so we can leverage our resources to support each other and other departments. So I express strong support for Jimmy as the Director of DBED.
Thank you. Next up, Director Heard from Department of Agriculture.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Sharon Heard, Department of Agriculture, stand on my written testimony in support of Jimmy.
Thank you. Next up, Georgia Skinner, on behalf of Creative Industries.
In strong support of Ms. Skinner, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Tommy Johnson, Director of Department of Curtains and Rehabilitation, also in support. Hawaii Technology Development Corporation, in support. Thank you. Next up, Daniel Noho P, Testifying for Hawaii Tourism Authority.
Hawaii Tourism Authority stands on a support of Tokioka.
Thank you. Next up, Sabrina Nasir, Department of Budget and Finance.
Strong support, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Stacy Ferrera, Testifying for Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
Aloha, strong support for Director Tokioka.
Thank you. Next up, Kali Watson, Department of Hawaiian Homeland, also in support. Hawaii Farm Bureau.
On behalf of DJ Chel, Kali, and myself, in strong support, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Brian Miyamoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau, also in support. Unite, Hawaii Here Local Five, also in support. Yep.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jovi Tokusatun with Unite Here Local Five. As an organization, we have known Mr. Tokioka for many years now. And in that time, we have observed firsthand his steadfast commitment towards defending the public's interest. As a former state legislator, airports division director, and hospitality industry leader, we know that Mr. Tokioka brings with him a wealth of knowledge and experience to the department. In fact, Mr. Tokioka has already proven himself to be a valuable leader to our state. His leadership in coordinating the state's response to the housing displaced Maui wildfire victims is also worth noting. Our organization is confident that Mr. Tokioka, if confirmed, will continue to serve in our community's best interest and utilize his diverse set of experiences and subject matter expertise to help stabilize Hawaii's tourism industry in lieu of the many challenges we currently face. So thank you for letting us testify.
Thank you. Next up, Deputy Director Dean Ricker for DBED. Thank you. Next up, Clyde Hayashi, also in support. Thank you. Maria Pasqual, also in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Lucy Pasqual, and I'm in strong support of GM number 595. Having been the ASO of the Department of Business and Economic Development since last year, I can say that Jimmy Tokioka is a passionate leader. He is truly clear about carrying out the department's vision and mission. Mr. Tokioka effectively delegates tasks to managers and staff, identifying employees and their unique talents and skills. As a result, the duties delegated are done effectively by the managers and assigned staff. Furthermore, he brings a valuable element of camaraderie to the team, characterized by a sense of humor that may not be immediately apparent given his position at the director level. In closing, I strongly urge his confirmation as DBED Director for this and other reasons.
Thank you. Didn't Mr. Tokioka write that for you?
Promotion.
Thank you. Next up, next up, Dr. Fink, in support. Ryan Yamani, oh. Thank you. Next up, next up, Ryan Yamani, also in support.
Oh, no.
Sixty seconds left.
He got only fifteen.
Oh, okay. Next, Chair, Vice Chair, and members. Speaking on behalf of Ryan Yamani, not as a deputy, just wanted to say to highlight the fact that I did see Mr. Tokioka, Acting Director, work very hard during the Maui fires. I was quite impressed of his dedication and commitment to work with the various stakeholders. Just want to highlight to the Chair that he had sixteen years of not being a chair in the House, so he's well-rested and ready to- so he's well rested and ready to testify.
Who needs enemies? Mary Alice Evans also in. Thank you, Mary Alice. Rachel Wong in Support. Thank you, Rachel. Craig Nakamura.
Stand in strong support.
Thank you. San Hai Government Strategies in Support. Joy Nilo, Director of Law Enforcement.
Stand by my written testimony in strong support.
Thank you. Ryan Andrews, State of Authority.
Stand in support. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Director Schniffen, Department of Transportation, also in Support. Daniel Ordendeker, LUC, also in Support. Keith Hayashi, Testifying in Hawaii State Department of Education. Thank you. Ken Hara, Department of Defense, also in Support. Gary Suganuma, Department of Taxation, in Support. Kristen Sakamoto, Department of Taxation, in Support. James Burrows, Emergency Management. So I got a lot of people in Support. In person, Brenna Hashimoto, Department of Human Services, not here, in Support. Many others. Jesus Christ, I didn't usually pay all these guys. But there's a lot of you guys in Support, but I have the Lieutenant Governor here. I figured this gotta be oppositions. Please, please, please. That'll be why. Have mercy, Lieutenant Governor.
Good afternoon, Chair and the members of the committee. You know, I apologize, I didn't submit testimony, but I'm just gonna be very short. You know, during the Maui fires, there were people who stepped up. And Jimmy Tokioka is one of those people that who stepped up. I called him at around eleven thirty, as you know, during the Maui fires I was acting of. And the way that he quickly worked with HTA, the members of the industry, working with Maui County, it's something that, you know, I just felt that I usually don't come to testify for confirmation because, you know, I believe that there should be, this is your latitude and this is your time. But I felt obligated to come and testify because a lot of times, even in your roles, we never want to be in a situation where, you know, we saw devastation like that. But, you know, the fact that Jimmy and he was able to showcase his skills and his relationship and the things he did, and he didn't sleep until the governor landed the next day for him to have done everything that he did. I felt I had to, you know, be here to testify and support. But, you know, if I had known that everybody else was gonna be testifying and support, you know, I wouldn't have come. Just kidding.
Now, can you tell us when he was in the house, though?
Yeah. So that's the other thing, you know, I mean, in the house, you know, he and I barely got along. So it somewhat pains me to be sitting here to be testifying in just admiration and support. But this is what happens, you know, I mean, you never know. And when situation comes up, people rise to the occasion. And I'm just very proud of him as not just DBED Director, but as part of the administration. So mahalo for your time.
Thank you, Lieutenant Governor. I guess as Mr. Yamani said, he was sleeping all that time, so. Is there anybody else wishing to testify in Support?
We want to call.
On behalf of Hawaii TV, says Local 996, we're in strong support.
Thank you. Anybody else outside wanting to testify on behalf of Mr. Tokioka?
Next, sir, in support.
Thank you.
Chris West, sorry. I apologize for not having a written recommendation, but I just wanted to echo Lieutenant Governor's words. My name is Chris West. I'm the president of Local 142 LW. And in the recent tragedy of the wildfires in Maui, we had 2,800 members that lived there. And out of the 2,800, sorry, not live there, that worked there, out of the 2,800, 1,500 resided and were homeless. And even though it was outside of Jimmy's scope of work, Mr. Tokioka's work, he was a huge, huge impact in mitigating a lot of our members and the problems that they were seeing because of the fires. And I wanted to mention that I came down personally to testify and support of him, but also to thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Seeing nobody else opposed this, but Mr. Tokioka, if you'd like to give us. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Decoit.
Do you need some Kleenex?
You know, oddly enough, Dean Minakami was the one who kind of made me, oh, get tears. Thank you, Dean. Vice Chair Wakai, members of the committee, thank you for this incredible, incredible honor to be sitting in front of you today. I'd like to thank Governor Green and Chief of Staff Brooke Wilson for pointing me to this very important department and your trust that I would be able to achieve the visions and the goal that the Green Administration set forth. I'm honored. I'd like to thank you, Chair Decoit and Senate President, for putting this item on the agenda as quickly as you did. Because I know that it could have been, you know, spread out and pushed back. Senator Kim Hederwein. So I appreciate you folks moving this up. So thank you for that. Huge honor. On a personal note, I have a son, Pono, which most of you know. My daughter Emma, Pono's twenty-eight, Emma's twenty-four. My mom, who's eighty-eight, is still living, and she probably watching. My sister probably had it set up on her television at home. So hi, Mom. My sister Donna and my brother Tommy. Our team, I'd like to thank our team, because I'm one of the fortunate directors that instead of coming to you after an election year when all the departments and directors are new and you don't know the people that they're working with and how they're gonna work with those people, I had the opportunity to do that for the last seven months. So I'm very, very fortunate, as in the Senate, you know, Deputy Director Dane Wicker. All of these things that people talked about that happened during the fire, I would not have been able to do if it was not for Dane Wicker taking over the day-to-day operations of DBED. And garnering the support of all of the division agencies, there was no, it was seamless. Dane just took over after I told him that with what the governor was asking me to do, it would be almost impossible for me to do both. And Dane stepped up to the challenge and really did a great job, and I cannot thank him enough. The other person that I'm gonna give a special appreciation for is Don Marata. I don't think she's here. She might be outside. But Don and Keith Regan, I gotta thank them because there was uncertainty what was gonna happen at the airport before I got there. So Don left the airport after twenty-four years, I believe, and she went to go work for Keith Regan. When I went to the airport after she had already left, there were some people, one of our friends, Wes Yonemi, being one of them, that called Don and asked Don if she could go back to the airport to help assist me in the many challenges that were there. And there were many. And so Don left as a director's administrative assistant to go back and work at the airport for me. And I had never even met her. So I thank her for doing that. And when I left the airport and went to DBED, she came along with me. So she's been a big part of our team. Kellyanne Yamamoro, who's Dane Wicker's administrative assistant. Lacy Goshe and Margaret Liu, had it not been for all of them during the fire, it just wouldn't have happened because they were on it every single day. There was a time where people here that are here from HTA and our office stayed at the convention center for twenty-four hours straight. In fact, sometimes more than that. Because the shelter at the convention center that was supposed to take in survivors that didn't possibly have flights to go back to the mainland and/or didn't have accommodations here was set up. And we anticipated that there would be about a thousand to fifteen hundred people that was gonna show up there. They didn't come in those numbers, but we were ready for them. And I need to thank a lot of people who were there during that time. Some of them are back here. Daniel Noho P, Elia Gaisan, Isaac Choi, as well. Were in the room for, you know, twenty-four hours in the beginning. I will talk about some of the others that we need to thank there. But I also want to thank the agencies from the comments and letters of support for my nomination. I personally didn't ask the agencies to send in testimony, but they're here. And I'm very, very proud to say that I work, we work together. So from ADC, Wendy Gady, BDSD, Dennis Ling, FTZ, David Sinkick, HCD, Craig Nakamura, HHFTC, Dean Minakami, HTA, Daniel Noho P, LUC, Daniel Ordendeker, OPST, Mary Alice Evans, SA, Ryan Andrews, ASO, Lucy Pasqual, CID, Georgia Skinner, HBDEO, Chung Chang, HGIA, Gwen Yamamorolau, HSEO, Mark Click, HTDC, Wayne Inoy, Nelha, Greg Barber, Reed, Dr. Deen, and SBRRB, Dori Pavlicek. I know this is taking some time, but I just want to thank them because they, during all of this time, has been very accommodating. And I know that it's a different management style that Deputy Wicker and I have, but they have been very eager and willing to change how they did operations. And, you know, we're not micromanagers, but we expect a lot of them. And a lot of what we've told them is you're gonna expect a lot from us. And I think Dane and I have a keen understanding of what happens in committee hearings. And if they're not prepared for it and we're not prepared for it, we're gonna look bad. And a lot of what has happened in the past with other departments that come and testify and don't have their information or tell you guys things that are not true or accurate, we wanted, we have instilled that culture that whatever it is, we've got to make sure that we, they understand that the legislature is the bank. What we get in funding comes from you folks. So we need to earn it, and we try to do that in every single thing that we do at DBED. So this is the hardest part about me, just talking about myself. But I think it's important that I share some of it, my public service. I've had the opportunity to serve in the Kauai County Council for ten years, in the House of Representatives for sixteen years as the Deputy Director at Hawaii State Department of Transportation Airports. I've been the interim director since May 5th at DBED. Prior to that, I worked in hospitality industry and for twenty-four years. I worked in Hawaii and all across the United States managing hotels and restaurants for holiday and corporation. I was in San Francisco in nineteen eighty-nine. I was the general manager of a hotel when the earthquake hit. And I had to manage that emergency situation. So it helped prepare me for part of this, been through Hiniki as well on Kauai. In addition, I spent twelve years working with Oceanic Timewear and Cable Spectrum. I oversaw new business accounts throughout the state. The biggest contract that was signed in the company's history I secured while I was working there. Since my nomination as the DBED Director on May 5th, I've been deeply involved in the wildfire response efforts. And, you know, there's a lot of people that talked about that. So I won't talk about a lot of what we wrote. But Red Cross has said that in any disaster nationwide that they've experienced, they have never seen survivors moved from emergency tent shelters to hotels or congregate shelters, non-congregate shelters, in the short span of thirteen days, moving five thousand people. So that could not have been done with a lot of help from a lot of people. And so I will start with the governor's office. Luke Myers and Craig Colet was there with me as the co-chairs of this temporary housing sheltering program, HAIMA. And I don't want to go through the names because I'm gonna miss some of them. But the American Red Cross came, you know, five days after the fire started in our communication room at the convention center. FEMA later on came. SBA was there, HUD was there, of course, HTA, as I mentioned. And one of the agencies that gets a little overlooked was the Hawaii Convention Center. Terry and her team did an incredible, incredible job staffing the convention center. As Dean spoke about the Hawaii Fire Relief Program, he popped up that program in a very short period of time where we got six hundred families to move into vacation rentals, single-family vacation rentals, six hundred of them in a short period of time. Since then, we've turned that program over to CNHA. So Cohil Lewis and his team are managing that program now. But every day was Office of Planning and Sustainability. The Reed Office was in that communication room every day trying to make sure that whatever we could do to communicate to the survivors and the media so that they could get that information out is what we took pride in. And it was a big, heavy, heavy lift. And some community partners I'd like to thank because they were there every day, every morning on Zoom, helping us coordinate. And that would be Jerry Gibson from the Hawaii Hotel Alliance, Jeff Wagner from Outrigger Hotels, Lisa Paulson from the Maui Hotel and Lodging Association, and Kelly Sanders and his team from the Royal Lahaina Hotel. You know, without their support and without them being on the call seven days a week, all of what happened wouldn't have been able to happen. One of the things that we're working on now with Maui County is the Economic Recovery Commission. Thank you, Senator Decoit, for being a member and for being there. But you can see in this commission, the people that are on it, and many of them sent in testimony, some of them are here. But what this commission is gonna be set up to do, that the governor appointed me to convene, is to get outreach into the communities from cultural specialists, from industry, from hotel workers, from the unions, from the trade unions. Because there's gonna be a lot of workforce development that needs to be trained going forward in Maui because construction will be a long-term commitment. And so the trade unions are a big part of it. I can go into some of the questions that you asked me in my thing.
We have your answers for that.
I was hoping you were gonna save that.
Only because we got hard stopped. And for the committee members that didn't get it, I had the email sent to you folks and the questionnaire that was answered.
And, you know, in our info briefing at WHAM, a lot of the things that we are, I mean, this is talking about specifically DBED now, are the same things that I was gonna mention in this presentation. So, you know, moving the needle forward, getting from the cradle to grave and schools connected with the universities, workforce development, the film unions and trades. So I can stop now if you wish and then be ready, prepared to answer questions.
Yeah, you know, we have your resume as well as your questionnaire. And by the amount of people that are behind you and the testifiers of a hundred and one people, mind you, today is the sixth month of the anniversary of the fire, which saves a lot. But I will allow the community, allow the community to.
I forgot another personal note because I wrote over Christine, I think she's outside. I wanted to thank her as well. I did thank my son and my daughter.
I don't think she heard you. Can you say that?
Christine, are you listening? Thank you.
Anything else? If not, I will allow the committee to ask. Thank you, Mr. Tokioka. Any questions?
I guess we gotta ask him some questions. So Jimmy, it is refreshing to have a legislator who understands the budget process head up DBED. And I know during the budget deliberations or the budget briefings that you try to get the DBED staff, agent, department heads, attach agencies to heed to some of the recommendations. And some of them did, but a lot of, a few of them, several of them didn't. So how are you getting them on board with the understanding of what's needed?
Okay, so I will say that few, we have not totally connected yet. And part of it is my fault because I was assigned to something else. I think you can see from the people who showed up today that they trust and respect what we're doing. And that's all, you know, we try to do is first of all, gain everybody's respect and trust. And then they can help us move the needle forward. But if they don't respect you and they don't trust you, it's not gonna work. So for me personally, it's a big part of our management style that we get everybody to understand. understand that, you know, we're just trying to make D-Bed better. We're trying to make the state better. And the only way that, you know, in any management opportunity, the only way we can do that is by trust and respect. So, that's what we're focused on.
And I just want to state for the record that when Mr. Tokioke took over D-Bed as Acting invited some of us to come and speak to the staff, to explain what the process is, and how it can assist them when they come before us, and answering questions, and being prepared, and so forth. So, I think that's the first time I've ever had, in all my years, had somebody, a director, ask us to come and address their department. So, I think that was a good step in the right direction. And certainly, a lot of them got it, but there's always a few that takes them a while.
I'm not even gonna look behind, but I think you can, I appreciate, we appreciate you coming because after the legislators that came, when they left, everyone said, you know, that's absolutely true. I'm glad that she said that. I'm glad that he said that. So, we still have more legislators that we want to come and be a part of the meeting, because that's where we brainstorm ideas. And that's where we try to get everybody on the same page. So, if people are trying to stray off, then everybody know that, you know, like I have said before, we have seventeen agencies at D-Bed. And, you know, we have to treat everybody fairly and equally. And again, with respect. And so, I know that for you personally, when you came, everybody was very appreciative of the things that you shared on when is it important to come talk story and not in the middle of conference when you got two hundred things that you're juggling. But, you know, in the off session, if something is a long-term plan. And I'm hoping that everybody's gonna continue to heed that advice.
I think communication is a key, and that's what, you know, is lacking up in Congress. And so, for us to have it, I think, and have leaders that will, you know, preach it and do the, actually, to do it. So, thank you for that.
Yes, thank you. You know, I would just say that, again, I go back to, you know, our experience, Deputy Director and I, we know what it's like to be on the other side. And we know what you guys are thinking. So, we want to make sure that we can anticipate some of these things so that we don't get cracks at one of the meetings.
Thank you. So, I'm just gonna finish up, you know, and I'm sure the rest of us echo the same sentiments that Senator Kim echoes. I will tell you this, that I, and let the committee know I had the honor and privilege of working with you during the beginning of the fires. And prior to that, when you kind of was sleeping at the House level. But, you know, I really appreciate, you know, the exchange of information, the sharing that you've given to all of us as you headed as the interim Director for D-Bed. It has been nothing but communication back and forth with every one of them. I think it sets a precedent here with many of the other Directors that have either been before us or those to come. So, I like the fact that there's open and clear dialogue and that they've actually called to schedule actually better timing, like you said, not during conference. So, I really appreciate that. Appreciate the fact of your vision and what you move forward and the people that surround you. And like I said, if the differences of opinions of people that you've worked with have now changed and have supported you, I thank the Lieutenant Governor for being here because I really was like, oh my God, here's an opposition. In that case, you know, I thank you for that because I do know that she was very proud to work side by side with you, as I was. And with that, before I get kicked out of here, I'm gonna go to decision-making. And we're ready to decision-make on our two P.M. Energy Economic Development GM Agenda. GM 595 submitting for consideration and confirmation as a Director of Department of Business, Economic Development, and Tourism, Gubernatorial Nominee James Konani Tokioke, for term to expire twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. My recommendation is to advise and consent. Any discussion from the committee members? Seeing none, Chair Wakai for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Vice Chair votes yes. Senator Fukunaga?
Aye.
Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, and congratulations. And with that, we can adjourn the hearing. Mahalo for being here today. Adjourn.